This meeting is called to order. The time is 2:04. This is the meeting. It's a special call meeting for the City Council for the purpose of reviewing and accepting the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. With that said, if y'all will please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Doug, would you give the pledge, please?
Good Lord, in the high state of America, in the public, the words of the Lord stand: One nation, under God, in the heavens, with the love of the Father, and with the love of the Son.
Thank you. Phil, would you like to do the prayer?
Sure. Dear Lord, please bless all of these folks that are working here today, that are trying to do the city's business. And please help the world through this coronavirus pandemic that we have. It is amazingly terrible what's happening. So, Lord, we will appreciate and hope that things get better instead of getting worse. Again, Lord, bless us. Let us lead in the right way. Amen.
Okay, Doug, would you please do the roll call?
Councilman Tesselberry?
Here.
Councilman Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Protim?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Councilman Sanford?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel?
Yeah.
You have a forum there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The opening remarks today, I want to give thanks to the each department head that's represented because what you see in front of you is a lot of work. It's the culmination of a lot of work and many, many meetings to get it right and to transition into a format that moving forward will assist us a great deal. I think that's all of my opening remarks. But we have opened forum. Due to the limitations still of coronavirus, our walk-ins are limited. So if you have any questions, you can submit an email to the council or to the city secretary at citiesecretary@cityofcoffeecity.com, and we will respond to that. The first order of business, item number seven, is to review the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And with that, I have some opening remarks. The council has a packet presented in front of them. And if you'll turn to the second page. My introduction to this is as follows. We know that the budget for the city is open records. Okay, we put confidential on there to keep it from getting out because anybody can request this information. Okay, not that we don't want it to get out, but we just want it to go through the proper channels if a request is made under the Public Information Act. The format you'll see in this has changed to provide a more in-depth and transparent view of the overall budget development process. And a lot of this Doug and I had been working on prior to, but kind of ramped it up when we met with the new auditor, who is a CPA. He's given us some insight that we are moving in the right direction to help aid in the process going forward. So the reason for this is to align the format with QuickBooks and to allow the approved budget to be input into QuickBooks to ensure that we can give more accurate reporting. And this also will allow the departments, which has been a little difficult to keep up with for them. They've had to do it individually and based on spreadsheets and reports and calculations. But the departments should be able to, when we get this completed, request reports to determine their status regarding their budget expenses. So we're hoping the goal of this is going to be to promote accountability for each department and their budgets. Giving us the right budget, understanding what all their city expenditures are and how we are all knitted together. So it'll make the budget process easier going forward. So we are preparing for and looking for our audit assessment and implementing any necessary changes. The current budget reflects an increase to allow for two years' worth of audit expenditures, which we kind of knew we were going to have to spend. So you'll see that represented. The numbers represented in this proposed budget are projected based on relevant information, such as increases to fees, unforeseen expenditures relating to the audit, changes in legislation, moving forward with enhancements to both the court and police systems. In addition, the further distribution of liability insurance, health insurance, payroll expenses have been made to reflect a more accurate picture of what each department costs the city. These numbers are a result of numerous meetings with department heads who are confident in these numbers that they have provided. And I want to say, I sincerely appreciate their contribution for the making of this budget and as well as their commitment to the city as we move forward. So if I can direct your attention, I would kind of like to back in. The first couple of pages are the fiscal year budget. That's the overview. Now, what the overview does, it takes into consideration all the departments. It gives you a breakdown of our restricted budget accounts and plus emergency funds and CDs. So if I could ask you to flip over, the next you'll see is the city component for the budget. And then after that, the next component is the municipal court component. Let me know when y'all get there. You there? Everybody find it? I should have put tabs. We good?
Good.
Okay, good. The reason why I want to start with the court first is because the income flows from that process down into city and various funds. So these numbers represent the review that the judge has done. So, Shalina, if you're open to any questions that the city council may have regarding your budget. There was one correction that I need to note for you is that when it comes down to employee two clerk, on what I had sent you out previously, I failed to make a correction. The one that is on there is correct. So the amount on there, I think it was off by $2,000, roughly. So does anybody have any questions for the judge?
Is it part-time on the clerk?
Huh?
Full-time.
Want to please full-time?
No, she's a part-time clerk, okay, now. Our goal is to increase her to full-time sometime within the year, okay? But that will be a council decision as we move forward. But it is allocated in the budget should the council approve it.
Okay, I do have one question.
Okay.
The warrant officer collections were showing $38,000?
Yes.
Previously, the last meeting it was 10.
Yes.
What I did, Phil, in council, I went back on the last couple of months where I've been keeping a tally each month of what Centrone has been collecting. And that number has been close to 4,000. We have a scheduled meeting coming up. I'll let the police chief expand on that. But we're bringing into the mix possibly another officer and possibly use some of the reserve. So I feel comfortable with that number.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah.
And when we went back and extrapolated it out, he decided that we reduced it down and it was really too conservative for what we've received.
Right, right.
So the judge really looked back at the business in that. Thank you, Doug. Any questions?
I have one. Was part two, Zat Mary, on the?
Yeah.
Okay. How's the wonderful?
Yeah. The other part of this, when you see this, you see that because the main bulk of revenue, income, whatever you would like to call it, is needed out. It takes care of. So you'll see her total income. You'll see her expenses. And then you'll see the net gain, which we are going to use that moving forward as an allocation to the city or as an inclusive for the city budget. So any questions regarding that? It just kind of lets you see more how the money flows and what's coming in. So now if you'll go back to the city portion, the city component of the budget. The city portion of the budget now includes sales tax, franchise tax. And again, you'll see directly underneath that the allocation to the city, which it- Should be corrected based on that one $2,000 error that I did not catch before, a $1,600 difference. It should be 128, 267, 22 on both of those. And I'll get you a corrected copy. But I just, we just saw that right before, well, right after this was printed. So we didn't want to kill any more trees. So overall, the total income for the city is 373, 667, 22. Now, again, this is only city. We're compartmentalizing the expenditures and the revenue. So underneath that, you'll see the allowance that we have pulled forward from the restricted accounts and the available fund balance for the audit of 15,000, repairs to City Hall, 5,000, the fire department funding, the community center repair that we are anticipating due to some problems with the ACs. The roads account is a restricted account, must be used for the purposes that it is, we get the revenue for. 50,000 because we are projecting to try to do the completion of roads. And I'll let fire chief speak to that. That has been in the works for, what, Chris? Now, two years?
Two-year cycle, yes.
Two-year cycle. So this is a completion of that proposal. The technology fund, $11,100. The building security fund, 6,500. And the LEA fund is a new fund. Judge, would you like to speak to that fund and some of the legislative changes?
Well, this has always been a fee that was attached to the citations written. It was to each violation, much like the security and the tech fund. There is a $5 fee per violation upon conviction. So just because they wrote it doesn't mean they get it. They don't get it until it's collected, basically, when a conviction is entered. So I can go back each year or at any given time and plug in a number or date range, and that will tell you the amount that is to be given to the police department for their training purposes. And we did that in our meeting the other day. I don't have that number. But I think going forward, Doug, we're not going to open up a new account from what I understand. We don't have to, after y'all talk to the auditor, right? But y'all are going to put that into QuickBooks so that money is transferred from the court to the police department. So that's money that they're supposed to get.
So it's money that has been always collected.
Right.
But it was not shown, okay? And due to certain situations in our nation, let me just put it like that, in our nation, there, I feel like there's going to, it's very timely because I feel like we're going to get legislation where it's going to require a lot more of the law enforcement officers to be trained. There's going to be a lot more requirements placed on them by our government, our federal government, and probably state government, too. So you can see the allocation there, the totals from both of those funds is totaling 121, 600. So the total income, including the restricted NAFV, is 496, 962.42. That is, again, strictly a city allocation to take care of city expenditures and the road expense overall. As you go to the expenses, we go down city overhead. Now, this is directly related to the city. It includes the EDC sales tax payment. It includes the salary and the health insurance expenditure and the liability for the city.
I have one question. I didn't know we were jumping over the next one. Judge, I forgot to ask you the day on the LEA, is that, when you said a conviction, is that also like a probation deferred? Is that considered a conviction? Or is it just for the actual violation?
I'll go take a question. Because that did come out. I need to look at that.
But right now, as you know, it's just if they plead for the violation not deferred or is that-
Right. Once the deferred is complete, though, that money is collected. And the statute talks about that. You know, what are they saying is a conviction when it relates to like the deferred or the driver's safety course? That fee is collected. So upon completion of the deferred, then that money, you know, at that 90-day, would be transferred.
It's allocated.
Yeah, it's allocated.
It's allocated out. Okay. So these particular expenses pertain to the city, the city secretary, and liability based on the prorata extrapolations that were done. And you have a copy of that as well. So you can tie that back. The road expenses. And you will see that overall, we have a net gain. Okay, and we have allocated money to the police department and to the fire department based on the money, as if, if you follow the money, because through the court, to the city, to the police department, to the fire department. Any questions on that? If you can, if you do, you can ask Doug. Okay, moving on, there are no questions. If you can go over on the, just on the other side of the municipal court is the police proposed budget. And you see, when we're looking at income, it's really an allocation from the city, which you'll see there. From time to time, the police department does provide reports to the community, police reports. So they are charging that. That started last year. So there, it's not a lot of money. It's like $6 a report, I think, or something like that. So we put in $50. The LEA, which you've heard, that's, it has to do with the law enforcement education. So that is in there. We're projecting out of the LEA fee. That's why you see the color codes. They tie back. Should tie back if I haven't made another mistake. But that's okay. It's a long process. So the police department overhead. Frank, thank you for your contribution to this. You see the expenditures for the automobiles as given, computer expenses. The education that is put there, $4,000, is directly related to the LEA fee for them to use towards additional training. TransUnion subscriptions. We have Axon TransUnion E-Forced, E-citation. I have isolation down there, but I think it's E-citation. Radar calibration, a breakdown of the salaries and the payroll taxes that are strictly related to the police department. Health insurance and the liability extrapolation for that department. Now, with this, you'll see a net gain-loss is zero. That's what we hope will always be the case, okay? If it's not the case, then that's where we'll come in and do adjustments. If it's a negative amount, then they have to come in line with whatever the allocation will be from the city. So it gives them actually a better handle on what's required of them to develop their budget. So any questions on that? If you do, feel free to ask Frank, our interim police chief. No question? Okay. The fire department, the next page is fire department component. And Chris was very kind to let me put his budget in a format to be consistent with what we're working with. And the allocation that the city has made to the fire department, $28,000, okay? And the breakdown, as you can see, his initial request was for the about $25,000. It ended up being 28, 711 with the liability because there are some things in here that you didn't previously see as represented in his budget. These are things that the city pays for that are directly related to his department, such as cell phones, okay, et cetera. The request, the funding request made for things, new equipment is $2,000, traffic control. And you can see, he does have a negative there for 39, 11, 43. So you have any questions? I do think it's really important that we see and show the fire department in this way because they are an extension of the city. They are a department of the city. So it's prudent for the city to see their actual operating budget as it pertains to Coffee City. Chris oversees a lot of other stations, but he and I work together. And I think that what we have here is agreeable, right? Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if y'all have any questions, you can ask Chris.
And I think you still have the itemized, broad itemized.
I do. Yeah, I do. Yes, and he did itemize, but the contribution, you know, there is, to me, there's an expectation that Coffee City should bear their portion for the gear, PPE, et cetera, fire equipment. And then any additional requests that are made, we can see how he does on the budget throughout the year. Any questions?
Is this also in QuickBooks?
It will be. Everything's going to be in QuickBooks. Right. So the next department that we have, the breakdown, is for the community center because it is a revenue center all unto itself. It makes revenue. We are projecting $9,500 in income. The expenses, the refunds, and that's another error that I, the community center rental refunds, that should be taken to zero because we would already have the money to refund if somebody should cancel. So it's not actually an expense. So you see the breakdown there for mowing and cleaning, repairs, maintenance, internet, the utilities. So as projected, the community center-
Minus forty?
Yeah. Takes care of its, takes care of, oh. Takes care of itself. Thank you, Chris. Okay. Any questions?
Can I say something?
Yes.
I think this is, and this layout's great, but I think this is really the, maybe the second year, but the first year I know of, I can think of, that the community center hasn't been a negative impact on the city's bottom line. The starting paper itself, we need to start moving towards getting it finished out a little bit as we can so it can continue to generate revenue.
Now, moving, no questions on the community center? Okay, now, the next couple of sheets you'll see are a breakdown of the restricted accounts. The roads component, this is currently representing the budget. Now, these numbers may, no, they haven't increased any, right? Reconciliations for the end of the year may be the only thing that affects these numbers. Right?
It's increased by 500, or $1,000.
Okay, okay. So, but the balance, as of the time that this was put together, was 75,199, 45. We're projecting, based on the sales tax, the 32.5 coming into the city. We are projected that $80,000 coming out for roads expense. So there will be a remainder in that count. We'll be drawing it down. Should all those repairs be made, down to $27,000.
Has our sales tax income increased this year or decreased compared to last year?
About 5% increase, 3% to 5% increase over last year from what I've seen on sales tax.
About the last month or two?
Actually, last month was 23.7, I think, this month's deposit.
For June?
That was June, which means it was for April.
May, I mean, April.
So that's in the middle of the pandemic.
Yeah.
And we're still looking fairly good. We're not seeing the rockiness that we thought we might see during April and May.
Thank you.
Okay. The next component, and this is a restricted fund also, is building security component. The balance in that restricted account was 13, 8, 18, 07. We're projecting income, and that's a direct projection allocation from the court. The projected expenses of $6,500, which would leave a balance of $16,000 in there. The next- The next technology fund, we have a balance of 12,000, roughly $12,996.81. Projected income, again, allocation from the court. Total expenses, $11,100, which will take that balance to 98.96 approximately. The next page, local consolidated course, court cost component. Judge, would you like to talk about some of those legislative changes, so they understand why we don't know anything really about this? No, the LEA we do. It's the LCC. This is what that is, the LCC.
Other than we're supposed to collect it, and there are four things in that fall underneath the LCC. One is a jury fee that is only to be used for jury expenses when we call the jury, so we know what that can be used for. Of course, we have the tech fund and the security fund now fall under that. And then, the little residual money that's out there is still yet to be determined, but we're to collect it, and it's just it.
So.
The what? The tru- there's a truancy diversion in there, but we don't have.
A school.
A school. We don't employ an officer for that position, a juvenile case manager, basically. We don't have the juvenile cases to support that type of salary.
Right.
So we have to.
And once we get this, because the buildings, the building security and the tech fund were already restricted funds, you will see a change probably in this. It'll all be under the umbrella of the LCC, and then you'll see the building security, the tech, the LEA, et cetera. So.
Not the LEA.
Not the LEA. The LEA's separate.
Right.
Okay, okay. Then you'll see those fall underneath there. Now, the next page, the LEA component, we've talked about that. The judge, like she said, had been, I'm sorry, Chris.
While we were with the judge, are we fixing to upgrade something on security or something? I noticed she had 6,500.
Yes.
Yes.
Lights.
Lights, courtroom.
Rail, courtroom, different things.
The LEA, the next one over is the LEA, which we've talked about. And as the judge said, she's been collecting that, so there was always a balance there. We just didn't have it broken out. It was never converted to be allocated. It was never allocated to the education of the Coffee City police officers. So now it is. So that's what you see there, and that's what you see, that projected expense for $4,000.
That one update fees to be 616.20, not 4.
Yeah.
Just in case.
618, 616.
616.
616.
No, it is 18.
It is 18. So now, the next couple of pages, the liability insurance component. This, if you look at that, you'll have to turn your pages. We, Doug, based on Doug's knowledge, it is roughly projected about an 8% increase is what we've seen. Is that correct, Doug? 8% increase over?
Over the years, yes.
Over the years?
Although, there was a statement sent out last month that said, basically said unless we've had losses, the base rate should remain the same come renewal time.
But, for the purposes of the budget, we looked at an 8% increase, and these are the numbers, broken down, city court, fire, police, EDC, and total. So Dawn is a member of the EDC. You were asking some questions about EDC components, you know, reimbursements back to the city, the EDC.
Yeah. Okay. What is the EDC reimbursement to the city? Let me expand on that, please.
Well, I'm just going by historical data, okay? Typically, Sandy has written a check. It's been annually, right, Doug?
Yes.
That it's been annually. You only pay it once, and it's for each, it's broken down by quarter. I have that information. But, so E and O is errors and omission, and these are calculations that were set up by the previous administration, okay? So you'll see a representative percentage. E and O is errors and o- errors and omissions insurance. General liability, $135. The crime, do you know what that is exactly, Doug? It's just says crime, PED, 34, I guess it has to do with the building security, maybe? And then, property, property would be the.
Strip Center.
Property would be the strip center, so that's what makes up that portion. You can't see it, I'm sorry, Dawn.
Oh, I have it out in front of you, get it through here.
Yeah. And then you'll see the breakdown, and those are calculations, basically, that the previous administration had calculated for percentages.
If you have any questions, Dawn, get with me after the meeting here, and I'll go over a little bit better in detail.
Okay. So what we did, we took down, basically, and broke down the bill and extrapolated those percentages. The next component is employee health insurance component for the city. And this, by and large, you'll see, I broke out the main components that really are the most expensive subcomponents as far as city cost goes, which would be the liability insurance, which would be employee health insurance. And you can see how those bu- bullet, budget allocations were made.
What are you calling mobile, if that's what you're doing?
What are you talking about?
He's on the previous stage. It's the trailer in the boat. Okay, what makes that mobile or not, you? Don't know, that's their consideration.
That's how they categorize it.
That's how they categorize it.
Zodiac, the boat and the.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah. Okay. So, employee health insurance, you'll see that breakdown and how that has been allocated to the budget. The next one is salary projections, which are projecting an increase in changes. It gives you a breakdown. We've had a resignation, and we had a hire back to a part-time position, so there was a $15,000 savings. And it allows for modest increases for city employees. And if there's any questions that you have regarding that, you can, you can talk to me. You can talk to me after the meeting. And then, also, I wanted to do, just for informational purposes, PTO and holiday annual cost. Now, this is just for informational purposes. I wanted you to see the breakdown in the cost for the paid holidays that are offered by the city, sick days, vacation days. At some point in time, this is not, these numbers are not represented anywhere in the budget, so it does not reflect the budget. But I would like to discuss at some future time in a city council meeting, some changes to this area. So now, now that we've gone through all the components, we can go back and look at the city overall budget, proposed budget, which is back at the front of your book. So, again, all of the numbers should carry forward, have carried forward, except for that one error. I've looked and looked and looked, Doug has looked and looked and looked until we cross-eyed it with numbers. But, again, it is a breakdown. This represents the overall. You'll see the city income, the city franchise taxes, you'll see the court allocation to the city, the warrant officer collection, the community center incomes represented, the police revenue is represented, the courts allocations to the restricted accounts is represented, as you've seen in the component and in the breakdown of the bank accounts or the restricted accounts. Miscellaneous income, the interest income. And then you'll see the restricted accounts, what we propose to spend out of those restricted accounts, which ties back to the breakdown in the components. The available fund balance, those are projected expenses, which is shown in each component category. Community center repairs, again, $2,000, which is shown in the component. So we have a total combined revenue, including the restricted and the AFB funds of 853, 550. And then, our expenses are broken out, again, should tie back exactly to the components. Court, cost, court overhead, with the correction under the court overhead of that employee two clerk is corrected in, this is the right number, the 22,495, 20, that is the correct number. It breaks down the insurance allocation for the department, and it breaks down the actual allocations, the transfers that would take place into the restricted accounts. Under the city, you see the accounting audits. The 30,000 represents two years' worth of audits, of which 15,000 we've allocated out of AFB. The reimbursement, Dawn, you were asking about this. We calculated back historically, Doug looked at this, historically, it has been a percentage of whatever the city's audit cost was. So this 7,500 represents basically, what, 32? 7,500 divided by two, because we're going to be auditing two years.
Let's say we had, or if that's been bad, I'm not surprised if we changed it and then we decided to go back to what we've always done.
Yeah.
And to jump back, because we are talking about EDC and the community centers, I didn't jump on that. Doug, you were making comments before about improvements on the community center and the income, and since any improvements on the community center probably will come from the EDC, because bathrooms were built by the EDC.
Yes.
Kitchen was built by the EDC.
Yes, the EDC.
I think you're saying it right, Chris.
Bathrooms and maintenance were built in the building, it had ACF requirements, so.
But we did build the kitchen, correct?
Y'all did, y'all did the kitchen.
We did put the sidewalk outside.
Yes.
We did put the lights outside.
Oh, yes.
We did put the, we did put the signs up front.
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, just want to get that put in.
The EDC contribution to this community center has been a great one, and we appreciate the EDC.
And Doug, your comment was on the profitability. Are we profitable or not profitable on the community center?
At this time, we're profitable in the community center.
Are we renting it very much since the pandemic's come out?
No. We're waiting, I mean, it'll hopefully come back.
It'll, it'll come back.
But this time of year has never been historically the time that we rent it. It's always been April, May, March, April, May, and then, again, October, November, and December, and then January sometimes.
What you say would be the priority on improvements on the community center?
Probably finishing out the back where we can separate those out, and maybe solo separately.
Doug has had a very good idea, I think. If we can get those two rooms built out back there, and somebody needs a smaller venue, it could be rented out as a separate rental.
We talked about that from the beginning. Some people don't need 2,000 square foot. And we've had the bid since January, that we do those and add lighting here.
Yeah.
So that's, that's not a new, not a new idea.
I've also talked to, Jim Beggarly actually brought it up, about finishing out, what would it take and what would we need? And we're trying to, he's got the plans together, so.
Yeah, we got the bid.
The part that you saw was, there's a $2,000 for improvements in the AFB. If we don't spend the $2,000 on the air conditioner, we may spend it on making some improvements to putting walls up.
The air conditioner's been.
They need to go.
They've been four, there's been one.
These two in here definitely need to go. We need to put a package unit outside, ducted up through and above, so you can put a drop ceiling in under them and get service to them. We had to put these in when we had the, when we got the fund, because that was part of the deal. We had to put in four split systems, which was bad to start with, but they're, problem with, you can't put a ceiling in here, because you can't service them.
Oh, what I mean, and ceiling and.
Well, if you want to ever put a ceiling in, you're going to have to do something where you can get service.
Where you can service.
Because if you put a ceiling, you got to come under and build a platform or a coat that you got to pull down somewhere or something that you can get over and get to and work on.
Yeah, I noticed you're suspended in a lot of the houses, not a base, or, well, you're the expert, because I think you're suspended from the records in the house, even a residential house.
Yeah. Yeah, I've got one in my house, by the way.
Yeah, I believe.
The big deal in those plans, and we've got them, those plans are built into those bids, is it's not necessarily as much, like we talked about them servicing. We can remote tiles and get up there and service. If you have to take that monstrosity down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
But code says.
You have to do.
Commercial building, you've got to build a platform that a service can take, can work off of.
Yeah.
So.
Down there, it's not hard, because we got the, if we finish those walls, those floors can be built solid for storage anyways, above it, still.
But you're looking $20,000 for that.
Yes. Yes. I think I still got one bid in my heart of, after that.
Not sure I wouldn't put one 10-ton in, come up and dug both directions.
Yeah.
But the idea is to go with the original plans, the way I understand them was, these rooms were all separated off. Those two were built out, right? Were, were, on the original plans, were supposed to be built out?
The four-step plan.
Okay.
This and the bathroom is the same, one. This, the bathroom and the kitchen, step two. The office back there was three, and four, or the one across, would have the small one and the military wall. And four, we'd be putting a ceiling in and proper lighting. And we've got a good bid on the lighting, because they want to do LEDs. They want to do like 25 LEDs, and they won't draw as much as these six are, and they put out more lights.
Okay.
Go on, I'll get you those, those bids again.
Okay.
I'm not an officer, I'm just wondering if that's fun, since we're on a budget meeting, and it was budget, and we did all of that.
Well, I'm making sense of it. We got, we got everything together in January.
Yes, we're, we're ready to move forward.
We, we met with people.
Yeah.
But since the day of inception, it's been, look back through the roof, with money predicated.
Yeah.
Under the city, you see those, we've already talked about that. Moving forward, you see all of the city expenses that we reviewed when we did the component pieces, reviewed the component pieces. Police. Police department, the same way, their direct overhead is listed. Fire department, same breakdown. Community center, same breakdown. So when you put it all together, okay, overall, if we just did not look at the AFBs or the restricted funds, okay, we would show a net loss to the city of eighty-four-six-twenty-two-oh-four. But with the AFBs, the available fund balances that were pulled forward, and the restricted fund expenditures that we want to make, we would be to the positive thirty-six-nine-seventy-seven-ninety-six. And then beyond that, you'll see another breakdown, which.
Can I make a comment at that point?
Uh, sure.
The eighty-four-six-twenty-two you see is, we actually have an offset of that of eighty thousand dollars that's going to the road, that's coming out of the road account. So from a cash flow standpoint, we're only down four thousand dollars, or forty-six-hundred dollars, and I think that's something that we can probably ma, make up somewhere else through the year, and then hopefully, we don't have to touch that affordable fund balance.
Affordable fund balance, yes, yes.
So that's a good thing.
Yes, thank you, Bill. And then you'll see the breakdown again, the breakdown for the roads, security fund, technology fund, the LCC, and then the, uh, the LEA, um, did I get the LEA in there? I guess not. Yeah, I did, LEA, it's down there at the very bottom. And then you see, uh, a breakdown of the emergency fund and the CDs that the city has. So, um, with that said, is there any questions regarding the budget? Proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one? No questions? Any comments? Again, I thank you, department heads of Coffee City, job well done. So we have reviewed the proposed city budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. The next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon ratifying the city budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, so it can be implemented before the end of the year.
I would make the motion that we approve the budget as prepared for us to review. I know of a lot of the work that went involved with this thing, going through lots of different paperwork and stuff, so I wanna, I wanna say my appreciation to all the folks that have done that. So, but anyway, I'll make the proposal, we approve it as presented.
All in favor?
Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Do I have a motion?
To adjourn.
Oh, what?
Motion to adjourn.
That's what I said, do I have a motion? Oh, a motion to adjourn? Second it? Okay, Riley second it? All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You're adjourned.
You're adjourned.